Good morning, everyone. Today is the ninth day of September. The time is nine o'clock. Board of Commissioners is in session. All three Commissioners are present. If we could have you identify yourselves, start no beer.
Bob Party Operations.
Rudy Smith, Operations.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Good morning, Herb Cantu, Solid Waste.
Jennifer Pike, HR.
Amanda Morris, Assessor.
Don Watts, Assessor.
Paul Kizieti, County Procurement.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Rob Brown, Treasurer's Office.
Marcy Paxton, Treasurer's Office.
Melissa Ellington, Brickhammett.
And IT guy.
Principal Ford.
Beth Maugh, Treasurer.
Thank you. Beth Burke, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, we have a couple of volunteer appointments to the Community Guards, the Board of Community Guardians, Pam Hickman and Laverde Jones. Is there any question or issue or discussion on the appointments? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the reappointments of Pam Hickman and Laverde Jones to the Board of Community Guardians with terms to expire 9/30/2029.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion, it's to appoint Pam Hickman and Laverde Jones to the Board of Community Guardians, term to expire 9/30/29. Any other question or issues?
Just a comment, we appreciate people doing this again, volunteering to be part of the community and help us in these kind of things.
Absolutely.
Thank you to these people.
Appreciate the whole Board of Community Guardians, particularly if they want to get reappointed. All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a proclamation. I've asked Commissioner Davidson to read the proclamation. It is Remembrance Week of 9/11. Mr. Davidson, if you could read that.
The Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation to designate the week of September 7th to 13th, 2025, as 9/11 Remembrance Week and September 11th, 2025, as Patriot Day. Whereas, 24 years ago this Thursday, the world watched the horror as two planes flew into the World Trade Center Towers in New York City. A third plane struck the Pentagon near Washington DC and a fourth plane crashed into a field in Pennsylvania, killing nearly 3,000 people. And whereas, we will never forget those whose lives were needlessly lost in an act that forever changed the course of US history and forever changed the way we live our lives. And whereas, we are proud to honor those who died in the memory of the freedoms that were taken from the American public in the way we travel, how we view the world, and how we live our lives. And whereas, we commit ourselves to persevering in a manner that does not allow the terrorist actions of that day to alter the fabric of our country and will strive to live our lives with truth, integrity, decency. And whereas, Ada County will always remember this week and that fateful day, September 11th, every year. Now, therefore, the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, do hereby proclaim the week of September 7th, 2025, as 9/11 Remembrance Week and September 11th, 2025, as Patriot Day in Ada County and encourage all residents to honor the fallen with respect and dignity.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. Any other discussion?
No, I think it's appropriate and I'm going to mention something later in terms of what we're doing on 9/11 this week that we will start with. I don't know if you want me to say that now or later.
Well, I'm going to just say it now.
Well, this, 2026, starting on July 1st, or January 4th of this year, we're starting the celebration culminating in July 4th of 2026, which is the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. So, 9/11 was kind of a reminder of what we did then in 1776. We declared our independence from Great Britain, declared that we don't want to have a king and some other things. And so, with that, we have, we at the county have designated Beth Maugh as our point person for that celebration. So, I might want to ask her to talk about what's happening this week.
On the 11th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'd be happy to. So, this Thursday, Patriot Day, America 250 in Idaho will host its kickoff event that is at 11:00 AM on the Capitol steps. Governor Little and other members of the Idaho Advisory Council for America 250 in Idaho will be present to make some opening remarks. And then, there will be an event in the park. There will be several booths from Sons of the American Revolution, Daughters of the American Revolution, Supreme Court, and other vendors will be there. Apparently, there will be the opportunity to sign a giant scroll remembering the signing of the Declaration of Independence. There will also be Revolutionary Spudibuddies will also be present. So, again, this is a free event. It'll be from 11 to 2 on Patriot Day and all ages are encouraged to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think it's appropriate that we kick it off on that day. I can remember 9/11 as clear as it was yesterday and it seemed to be something that brought almost every American together in support of the whole situation because it was such a negative thing to watch that, watch those Twin Towers come falling down and America was united. And that's what we typically do as a people when we're attacked, we are united. And with that, I'll accept the motion.
I move to proclaim and declare and designate September 11th, 2025, as, and 9/11 week as Remembrance Week of Patriot, as Patriot Day in Ada County.
Thank you, do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Been moving seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, next. Do we have anybody in here that can take a picture? Who? All right, we're going, all right, let's stand where we're well. Which does require a motion.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, we have a award of Ada County Generator Replacement, tabled from 9/2. Go ahead.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The evaluation team is still in the process of reviewing the two bids submitted for this project and will need additional time for review to allow for this time. We would like to request to retable the award recommendation to the September 18th Open Business Meeting for further consideration.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table to 9/18, Award of Bid Number 25071.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, thank you. Now, we have the award of bid number 25072, the rebid of the Ada County Sheriff's Office Radio Sites Tower.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we did receive six bids for bid 25072, the rebid of the Ada County Sheriff's Office Radio Sites Power System Battery Replacement. And we have this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Okay, go ahead.
It's a letter dated September 9th, 2025, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 25072. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bids submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 25072 to Stationary Power Systems Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $78,019.85.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and Award Bid 25072 to Stationary Power Systems Incorporated in the amount of $78,019.85.
I second the motion. Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, now we have a couple of resolutions. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 3128, a resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the Ada County Prosecuting Attorney's Budget. Is there any question or issues or comment on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 3128. Call for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 3128 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 3129, a resolution adopting amendments to the Ada County Deferred Compensation Plan to provide for a change in normal retirement aid. Age change in trustee and provide for an effective date for the amendments. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I, since this isn't totally clarified and I want people to understand that, Jennifer's here, she might want to explain exactly what we're doing here. There's nothing unusual about this, but it might sound like it is to some people, so.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, so yes, this document had not been updated a number of years, so the normal retirement age was previously listed as 40. In this new update, it's listed as 50 to align with the county practices around our other retirement policies that say at age 50, individuals can take certain retirement benefits. So, it's just an update to that. It also gives them the ability to do those catch-up provisions as well. So, we're currently operating as if this is in place, but our document had not been updated formally. And then, obviously, we've had changes on our Board of County Commissioners and we still had some very old names listed on there, so getting that updated as well.
Well, it's nice when you have correct names, isn't it? Okay, any questions or issues? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution Number 3129 and accept a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 3129 as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 3130, a resolution to modify rates at the Ada County landfill. Fortunately, we have our director here with us to talk about. Go ahead, Herb.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Sorry about the Seahawks.
That's a good game.
Yes, Resolution Number 3130 modifies the landfill disposal rates for general refuse. Those rates will be increasing from $32 a ton to $33 per ton for any county waste.
Say it again.
So, our rate's been going from $32 to $33.
We're raising it a dollar.
$1 per ton for in-county waste and then going from $39 per ton to $40.25 for out-of-county waste. We also are establishing a new fee for processing asbestos. That usually takes twice the amount of airspace as traditional MSW because of what we have to do to manage it, to isolate it from the waste mass. Those fees will be $48 per ton for in-county waste and $50 per ton for out-of-county waste.
For asbestos waste?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Looking at the total impact for the residents, roughly based on our current population data for 2024, there's roughly 535,000 residents in Ada County. That roughly adds up to a dollar, almost a dollar per year, 95 cents per year is what that looks like on impacts to the residents.
Going to get HELOC to pay it?
Over $0.8 per month is your fees, which I think is really reasonable.
Well, incidentally, I got a comment the other day from one of our customers, one of the cities. They thought it was quite reasonable and as much as they're raising their rates, about $3.
Yes, anywhere from 6% to 8%, depending on which jurisdiction you're applied to.
Yeah, right. Yeah, which is reasonable. Okay, any other comments you want to add to that?
I'm glad we're able to keep our fees quite low for our residents. We're doing our best we can to control costs.
Doing everything we can, plus we have some supplemental revenue coming in.
Yes.
Yes. And that's great. All right, any other question or discussion before we proceed?
Just a comment to thank Herb and his staff for doing the due diligence that's required to keep this at $0.8.
Yes.
For a person or a household in the county because it's the hard work of putting all the pieces together.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We want to keep our rates down and make it so it's not expensive. And I might add that the landfill receives no property taxes at all.
That is correct.
It's all straight with the reuse of fees. And in some counties charged, that's where they get their money, is property taxes.
Yes.
But we don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 3130 and unless there's any further discussion, I'll call for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 3130 as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, now we have an ordinance up. I will open the public hearing on Ordinance Number 1001, an ordinance stemming Ada County Code Title II, Chapter 1. We have a couple of distinguished people from the session room that's going to give us a breakdown on this. I've read it, but it's kind of complicated what we're doing at home.
Yes, it is pretty complicated. The assessor's office has been in charge of this street naming and addressing for about 15 years now. And over the years, we've identified some changes that we felt were warranted as well as some clarification in the ordinance. The changes that we are suggesting to the board are, will improve the efficiency of weight finding for citizens and commercial operations. Amazon delivery should find you a little easier if you happen to not be on an alignment street.
Well, we got to make sure Amazon can find you.
That's right, yeah. Honestly, that's one of the complaints we get, you know, Amazon or the pizza delivery person can't find our address.
I would imagine the pizza delivery would be a higher category than Amazon.
Of course, yes, yes. It also streamlines the review process, making it easier for both our office, the other offices that do the reviews, and the developers that are submitting these applications. If we're not requiring alignments where they don't want alignments, then we have less contentious relationship with them. It also provides needed clarity for the appeals processes that, who's, who does the appeal go to? As well as some other minor clarifications as to the process. So, we think these changes will benefit everyone involved in development and the citizens at large.
All right. Any questions or discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is one of the things that I had no idea and people don't realize what naming a street means in terms of until they're waiting for the pizza or their EMS to come or any kind of a first responder. So, it's one of those things that needs to be delineated well so that we can all function well. One of those things you don't realize the importance of it until we need it.
And Emergency Services has reviewed our changes and have no objections.
All right, does anybody have any objections? I don't think so, this is a public hearing, nobody's here to object. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion from the board? If not, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance Number 1001 and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve Ordinance Number 1001 as listed on each of them.
I second the motion.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 And motion carries. Okay, now we have a provisional exemption under Idaho Code 631305C. I guess we need to open the public hearing on a provisional exemption. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to this? This is a provisional exemption, which means they otherwise qualify, but they're doing a construction. Is there any issues or discussion on this provisional exemption?
Mr. Chairman, we might want to explain this as well because the normal process is earlier in the year of the provisional exemptions. And this particular Calvary Chapel applied for that. It was denied based on the construction thing that you mentioned. There's no deadline for provisional exemptions and that's why we're considering this in September where we normally wouldn't be considering it. So, just as a clarification, if anybody's listening, this is a provisional exemption, not a normal exemption process.
That's right, and it's because it's under construction. They will, they'll be able to apply again next year for the full exemption. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on this provisional exemption and accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the provisional exemption under 631305C for Calvary Chapel Star Incorporated S0404438625 and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have procurement again.
Yes, back for more.
Yes, back for more, opening of RFP 25073, Ada County Armored Car Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we've had a clear, uh, three proposals for this project and it has our bonfire, you procure the system, I'll tee it up if you're ready for us to open it.
We're ready, go ahead, open up bonfire.
Mr. Chairman, today since it's a RFP, we'll be just looking at the name of those three proposers. I'm happy to say that we did get three. The last time we did this, we got one, so a little bit more into the competition pool.
Ada County growing.
Yes. So, our three proposers for this project are Brink's Incorporated, Cashman Services, and Lumis US LLC. And our evaluation team will need some time to review these proposals and we would like to recommend that this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation through the September 23rd, 2025 Open Business Meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there any question from the board? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to table the award of RFP 25073 to, September 23rd? September 23rd, 2025.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. We are fortunate to have our distinguished cook with us today, Mr. Trent Treble. Give us a good report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have the Board of Community Guardians open house and that's always a fun event every year where we bring in people that are beneficiaries of that and especially those that are working on the boards that help us out tremendously with that great effort. It's a great community asset and it helps some folks who are challenged to take care of themselves. And so, we're excited for that event today. We also are three weeks away from the end of fiscal year, so it's pretty busy down in the auditor's office right now. And pile on top of that, we have an election coming up in November, trying to finish up a remodel in the.
So, you have nothing to do?
No, we're pretty bored right now.
Your prediction in the turnout?
Close to 30%.
30% is what we're thinking of. Pretty good.
Some of the bond, when money's on the ballot, there's a little bit higher turnout, but there's not a whole lot of competitive races. In the races right now, in the city council, there's two of the three seats that are open, that are competitive. In Meridian, there are three incumbents and no challengers, which was interesting. And then Eagle, Garden City, Kuna Star, all those seats, there's a mix of open seats and some competitive races in there. The mayor's position, obviously, in Garden City is an open competitive race. In Cemetery District, we have competitive races.
I noticed it. Dry Creek has a competitive race with the mayor of Garden City being one of them.
We also have no one filing in some of these, so those will be interesting things to watch. There is a.
What happens when nobody files in one of these little taxing districts?
We're still trying to figure that out. So, we'll see, I think there's some statute for appointments and some other things that'll have to take place. But there is a competitive fire district, any guesses as to which one?
Eagle.
No?
Star. Star!
Surprise, stars.
But not Middleton.
Not Middleton.
Because there's sort of a combined district.
Yeah, so anyways, that's what the election's coming up. We have 353 unique ballot styles because of all the splits in the county. So, that'll be a challenge for us, 49 taxing code combinations. We will have 189 active precincts on Election Day. But our big star for this election coming up is a fairly significant expansion to in-person early voting. We now have for the first time an early voting site in every single city for the county, which will be great. And we'll have two weeks of early voting, starting on 20 October through 31 October for those that want to get out and vote in person, but may not be able to vote on Election Day, so.
Where'd you end up with the Garden City early polling place?
In our fairgrounds. Uh, in, uh, our fairgrounds, which is actually more centrally located, so it's actually...
Well, we're glad to accommodate you.
Yes, two positions, uh, that's a re- that's my report, Mr. Chairman, any questions for me?
Well, you didn't, you didn't note, note that, uh, Eagle has a real competitive, uh, uh, county racers, what is there, six or seven candidates, two seats?
It is, it is going to be quite a race in there, yeah, very competitive.
I noticed that, and it's, and they don't have a runoff provision, do they, so that, so somebody could get elected out there with thirty percent of vote, I'm not guessing. Possible.
Several years ago, we had a recount in one of those, uh, vote for two type situation, and it was very eye-opening.
But now we have ballot verifier, it reduces the keep, the propensity for recounts.
It should, for sure.
Anyway, all right. Well, anything else for us?
That's it.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, you, you just came back from, you have, some of your staff got awards or finished some training, is that right?
We had, uh, several of our staff members complete the two-year, uh, educational courses for national certified elections officials, uh, and it was down in Salt Lake City, uh, great event, a lot of people from all over the, the country. Um, once again, Ada County, um, while we think we're big in the state of Idaho, when you compare us to the country, we're, we're not that big, um, but yet we keep getting brought up as being on the cutting edge of, uh, elections administration and taking it serious, and with our large number of people that are certified in this county, um, it's a, it's a big, um, feather cap for sure, so it was a goo- good event to be a part of.
Well, congratulations.
And that certification qualifies them for what?
It's just a natural certification as part of this association, and it, it's a, it's a hallmark to show that they've been through things like financing elections and elections integrity and cybersecurity and all of those things, so that, uh, they, they know what they're doing when it comes to elections administration. It's not the wild, wild west, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, thank you again. Okay, uh, we have some catering permits, we have eight catering permits, uh, one new license and a license transfer. Any questions on any of the catering permits or new license or license transfer? Hearing none, I will accept the motion.
I turn now move to approve the catering permits, the new licenses and license transfers as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Thank you, you've heard the motion, ready for the discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion?
Carries, thank you.
Okay, now we have the claims journal, we need to make sure we get our bills put this week, any question or issues on any of the claims journal? Hearing none, I will accept the motion.
I move to authorize payment of claims on claims journal dated September fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Now we have personnel actions, six automatic grade step, uh, progressions, and ladder changes, one internal recruitment. Is there any questions or issues on the personnel actions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, all, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, we have the assessor's office, we have somebody here from the assessor's office.
I do.
You're still here, thank you.
Still here.
Thanks for hanging around.
My pleasure, Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, right now, the assessor's office is, is very busy with the reappraisal, we are reappraising approximately forty-five thousand parcels this year. Uh, that's our primary focus right now.
Okay. Got your air conditioning working again?
Air conditioning is working. Yeah, got a little toasty in there.
Yeah.
But, uh, everything's working, so thank you to operations.
So, we're glad we get you cool again.
Yeah.
Okay, we got some new software coming.
Yeah.
Oh, your camera stuff going on.
Yeah.
That's gonna take a while.
That's, yeah, that's gonna be a process.
Yeah, and once again, we're on the cutting edge of the whole state.
That's right.
All right. Anything else?
No, no.
All right, well, thank you.
We have the tax cancellations, uh, I can state for that.
Yep, okay, well, Mr. Chair, we do have a few tax cancellations, go ahead.
I was just curious, uh, you getting a lot of people coming in buying the specialty license plates, do you see an uptick on any versus any of the type of plates?
Yes, our DMV manager has mentioned a few times the black license plate is very popular.
I've seen those around too.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of them out there already, so those are very popular, as are the don't tread on me, uh, plates are also very popular, yeah.
Good. I like the bluebird.
God, I don't know.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, now we'll, uh, we, we have a few, thirteen tax cancellations, which I always like to note that these are not actually cancellations, but the statute calls them cancellations, they're just adjustments, because these people file for all more exemption. All right, I'll accept the motion on the, uh, tax cancellations.
I'll move to approve the tax cancellations as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Carries, thank you. We are fortunate today to have our distinguished treasurer with us, Ms. Beth Mon, we appreciate you being here.
Yes.
Your contributions to the county.
Well, thank you, my pleasure, and I'm joined by staff today, uh, who will present our monthly investment report for August.
Thank you, Chairman, commissioners.
How are we doing?
We're, 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 uh, doing, doing well, if we, uh, look at the activity this month, there was no, uh, maturities, there was no new purchases, and, uh, so if we go to, uh, our page six, we would like to focus on that to see where we're at and how we're, uh, going along with our estimate, and, uh, as you can see there, our total interest eleven months into this fiscal year is eleven point three million.
So we might hit twelve.
Well, our, I, I, we will.
Yeah.
We'll hit twelve, so our average is one million thirty-four thousand. Pulled up our estimate, which we had given, usually we give these about a year and a half before the last month of the fiscal year, and the estimate was twelve point six, so we're real close to that, and, uh...
Great.
So we'll, we'll get close to that, I'll be curious to see, uh, how close we are. One of the things I wanted to point out that's happening now that can significantly impact our, uh, portfolio is the, the Fed funds rate, and so they're meeting next week, the, uh, consensus is that they're gonna lower rates by at least twenty-five basis points, and that's the most probable outcome, uh, so I, I wanted to look back at, at the history of their lowering of the rates and how it impacted our portfolio. And so I went back and looked, and, and last September twenty-twenty-four, they lowered the rates fifty basis points, and then in December of last year, they lowered another twenty-five basis points, and so what I did was I went, mostly that affects the short term, uh, which is our money markets, and if you look at the, the front page there, our money market rate, uh, for this past month was four point, almost four point two. So, in fact, today, our Vanguard, which is the bulk of the money in our money market, is on our Vanguard account, it, it's currently four point two. Last year, in August, just before they lowered the rates, it was five point two-two, so over a hundred basis points higher, and then in January, just immediately the month, uh, after the second rate reduction, uh, it was at four point two-eight, so almost a full hundred basis points in just that short period of time. The current rate, the current Fed funds rate is four point two-five to four point five, so they give a range, uh, and the reason they give a range is because they don't set a specific number, it, it really is dependent upon the, uh, pri- the, the demand and supply of the, uh, inter, interbank transfers from day to day, but that's the range it stays in. Uh, when we looked at FY twenty-six, our forecast there is, uh, nine point three million, and so the, the way we came up with that is, is Rob Brown and I did it independent, cause we wanna look at, you know, these things independently and then kinda compare, and then we came up with nine point three million for next year, that gives us, uh, an average, uh, of about three point six five, so we'll see how that, that plays out, but as you can tell, that's over three million dollars drop in interest income from our portfolio based on what the Fed does, and, uh, we, we look at what the Fed governors had stated in the Fed Funds dot plot when we forecast that, along with a few other things, there's so many moving parts here. Uh, so that's what I wanted to focus on today, we do expect, um, a drop next week, in fact, it, I think it's almost a hundred percent certainty at this point that that'll happen, and so one of the things we're doing and, and we're talking about is with that, the, the money markets that we currently have, uh, well, at this time, we had fifteen million in there, uh, there's two money markets that we have, one is a Vanguard money market, which we just pretty much leave, and the other one is, is a money market where our interest that comes in monthly or any maturities go into that bucket, and we use that to redeploy into a new bond if we have a bond that's, uh, matured, and so it's less than that now, it's probably closer to eleven million, but what we're doing is, is we're actively looking for, to redeploy some of that money that's sitting in the money market, cause we fully expect, uh, our yields to drop, and so probably by next month, we'll have, uh, move some of that and locked in, uh, some yield that we, we can depend on staying stable. Uh, other than that, we just didn't have much activity, uh, but we're, we're doing well, the portfolio's doing well, we're right on target, which, uh, uh, to be humble is pretty, pretty impressive to be that...
That close.
But, but, you know, so, it probably goes to the old saying, uh, even a blind squirrel sometimes finds an acorn, so it, it's really impressive that we, we came so close, but there's, there's really an element of, uh, it's gotta lock it in there.
Sure. Well, one thing that, uh, when there's a decrease in rate, it increases our present value.
That's right, yeah, because the bond...
However, we don't trade, we don't trade, so it doesn't make much difference to us, but it does increase our present value.
It does, yeah.
Higher, higher yields, and when they, when they decrease the yield, the value goes up a lot.
Yeah, and so we'll see the market value go up, and one thing of, of, it's good about that, i- i- as you stated, we don't typically buy and sell or trade, but if the county ever needs money, uh, that's a decent time to consider, you know, if there was something that needed to be paid off or something like that.
Sure.
And so there's that optionality, which is, is good to have.
Sure. Yeah. All right, good enough, any questions from the board?
Nope, actually, it's interesting, I had the questions written down that you had, you, you answered them, if the Fed does his thing, I went back and looked at, at, at the, uh, money market, in, in April was nine point eight, so, uh, that, that fluctuation that you're talking about is, is...
Or the amount of money that was...
Exactly, so it's, uh, it's, uh, it's interesting, and then, uh, back to the, the squirrel analogy, they use, they use other of their, uh, assets, you know, to find that, and that's what you guys are doing, so we appreciate your, your doing that, but I have one, one more question. On, on page six, what, the, the three months that it was under a million, you identified, like, uh, November, or December, January, and May, there, where it's eight hundred, eh, nine hundred thousand, eight hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred fifty-four thousand, what, what was unique about those months, or, I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, that, that's okay, uh, it, it really, there's so many different investments that we have, and we have different bonds, and some bonds pay quarterly, some pay, uh, semi-annually, uh, we get money, uh, monthly, LGP pays monthly, and depending on how much money we have in there, you know, we're gonna get a lot more, if you look at the, at, at May, and you look at our Fed agencies, we just coincidentally, which is the far left column, we coincidentally had zero income, we had, we just happened to, our portfolio has bonds that none of them had a payout in May, and so that makes a difference, uh, so it's really a variety of different things, um, yeah, distribution's a big one, some of the big amounts that you see in there, in the totals, uh, particularly with, uh, uh, LGP, so August, that last month, uh, that we just got through on LGP, you see that one was over a million, the other ones weren't near that except for February, and the reason for that is that's our big tax collection time, so that money's coming in, we're moving, we don't like to keep it in our bank account, so every day we move that over, capture some higher yield at the state treasurer's office, and so on those months, you see a big jump up, but it's really just a, a combination of the, the, uh, different items that we have, we have one, um, zero coupon bond, and we just happen to have only one of those, and so that's a, a, a bond that you buy, you might buy it for five million now, and you get no payments, there's no coupon payments, until it matures, and maybe that's three to five years later, you get it all...
In a lump sum.
One lump sum, and, and so it's just a combination of the various investments that dictate that.
All right, you're do- you're doing a good job, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that, any other questions before we move on? Thank, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
You're finding, you're finding the acorns.
Well, another analogy I, I use once in a while is a broken wall clock is, gives the correct time twice a day. I've never heard the acorn one. Whirling the acorn one. All right, good enough, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have the approval of the minutes, is there any question or discussion on the four minutes we have, uh, posted? Hearing none, I will accept the motion.
I move to approve the minutes, the intended hearings, uh, August sixth, jail inspection, uh, August twenty-sixth, open business meeting August twenty-sixth, and a public hearing of July third, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. All right, now we have a number of agreements, most of these agreements, not all of them, but most of these agreements are renewals, because, uh, as a county, we can only, our agreements can only go through the end of fiscal year, which ends this month, so we have to do, renew a lot of these. Uh, there's fifty-eight agreements, again, most of them are renewals, some of them are not, is there any question or discussion on any of the agreements?
Mr. Chairman, I, I actually would like to talk about several of them if you...
Go ahead.
Like you said, it's, uh, it, these, a lot of these are just renewals, but as, as you said, some of, a lot of them are renewals, but where, where it says appropriation on here, I think it should be noted that even though it, it looks like there's a lot of appropriations here, uh, as we, when we passed the, the budget, only, uh, less than, less than fifty percent of it was probably entirely.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, all the other stuff we're talking about is, is revenue sources like, uh, the landfill and some other things, but just a, a couple of things, the DMV, there's, there's three on the DMV locations.
Hmm.
Which is us being able to provide services to, uh, number eleven, number thirty-two, and number fifty-six are all DMV locations.
We're able to provide services even to Canyon County, because Canyon County has one DMV, uh, location, we have numerous of locations, so it's easier to reach our offices, and a lot of Canyon County people, they go into the, into the, uh, Star office and, and some of the Kuna office, it's closer for them, and we're happy to provide that service.
Right, and it, and it, and it actually saves taxpayers a lot of money, uh, in terms of that, so it, 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 that is taxpayer money, but it saves them money. Uh, and, and juvenile services, uh, the sheriff's office provides juvenile services, there, there are like, uh, twenty of those, uh, and they're everything from San Diego Health, uh, Potomac Garden Salvation Army, anyway, those are, uh, things that we provide to the community, uh, through the sheriff's office, through juvenile services, I should say.
And typically, they're, they're coroed.
Correct.
So they get, so juveniles can get back on the right track, hopefully. Anything else?
Fire dispatch, we have, we have three that are fire, four that are fire dispatch, again, Eagle Fire, Meridian Fire, and Whitney Fire, those are all agreements that we have so that we can actually make all of our, uh, services that we're providing to the county cooperating services, sometimes it's confusing to people, cause they see their tax bill or where they are, they're in Whitney Fire District, and then they're in the Meridian Library District, and then they're in the, uh, the State of School District, and all of those things.
There's only, there's only, what, forty-four taxi districts, Mr. Clark?
Uh, on this...
No, I mean total.
Oh, four, four, yeah.
Yeah, forty-four, yeah.
So so- sometimes it's confusing, but that, this is the process we go through to make those things function together, I guess, is part of what I'm getting at.
They do.
Everything from the Dry Creek Historical Society, which is number twenty-three, uh, treasure space at Cloverdale is one of those on this list as well, uh, where we can, and I just had somebody who congratulated us for that, a constituent, so that he, as he pays in person, and he...
At Cloverdale?
At Cloverdale, so he doesn't have to come all the way down here to here to do that, so.
Perfect.
He appreciates that. So uh anyway, those are the, those are the kinds of things that are in here, and I just wanted to make sure people understand that, that.
Well, I appreciate that, and there was, and there is fifty-eight, so there's a lot of them.
So I didn't go through all of them.
Yeah, oh, no, well, we wanna get out of here before noon. Are we good? Cause there's uh there's there's a fifty-eight of them.
Just to make sure people understand, we do read these, we do them, and they're they're important to the community.
Well, they're important to the community. Any other question or discussion on any of the agreements? Hearing none, I will accept the motion.
I move to approve the agreements, the fifty-eight agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any more discussion? Again, this is fifty-eight agreements, most of them, but not all, most of them are renewal agreements, and they they benefit the the taxpayers of the communities in many ways. So uh you've heard the motion, without further uh discussion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Lastly, on the agenda, we have uh the weekly indigent items. Uh I've looked them over, is there any any question or issues on any of the weekly indigent items? Hearing none, I will accept the motion.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated September ninth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, is there any other business needs to be brought before the board while we're here? Alright, we are adjourned.
Thank you.